I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's good to see so many people here tonight. And going off script a little bit, I'd like to welcome Mr. Al Feldenstein, who has done wonders for this area for so many years. Al, it's great to see you here tonight.
I most certainly hope that he has a story for us, sir. Al, come on.
I'm not able to tell in front of my wife. Proceed.
And I'll take my $10 on your way out. Okay, gentlemen, are there any additions and deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 26 meeting?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll start the evening off with a proclamation, the week of the young child. Ms. Amy Weaver, Western Maryland Association of Education of the Young Child, if you'd like to come forward and say a few words, please.
May I?
If you don't have enough, I'll fill in for you.
Great. Do I pay the $10?
No, he will pay you.
Oh, thanks. County Commissioners, on behalf of the Western Maryland chapter of the Maryland affiliate of Education of Young Children, we'd like to thank you for recognizing us today. Our mission is to empower both parents and teachers of early childhood children in their mission to provide quality, high-quality environments. And this proclamation helps to solidify our mission and what we are doing day in and day out. NAC has worked since 1926 to improve the quality of childcare for children zero to eight and to promote its developmentally appropriate practice. In this critical time, it is very important that we continue this message so that everyone hears the importance of developmentally appropriate practice over scale and drill. Our organization covers Frederick, Washington, Garrett, and most importantly, Allegheny County. This week is all about highlighting the work of the young child, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy. If you'd like to come forward, please.
Right in the center, please.
Proclamation here for you. Allegheny County Government Proclamation, celebrating our youngest learners, whereas Allegheny County Government appreciates the Western Maryland Association for the Education of the Young Child and all other agencies devoted to young children in our community. And whereas early childhood years, birth through eight, shape learning and development and lay the foundation for success in school and later life. And whereas every child deserves to experience the type of environment at home, in school, in childcare, in the community that promotes early childhood learning. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Allegheny County, wish to recognize and highlight our youngest learners and do hereby proclaim April 12th through to 18th, 2015, as Week of the Young Child in Allegheny County. We have here on two set our hands and cause the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed this ninth day of April in the year 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody, and Commissioner Jake Shane. We appreciate all of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Might as well sit down for a while because Michael might take a look.
Oh, okay.
I was actually just like to read the proclamation.
Come on up to the microphone. This is Fair Housing Month. Mr. David Nedved, Economic Community Development Representative.
I don't really have much to say, believe it or not.
Thank you.
Let's just do the proclamation. I'm for it. Every April, the county recognizes Fair Housing Month with the proclamation that's about to unfold. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Mark. Okay, Allegheny County, Maryland official proclamation. Whereas we, the county commissioners of Allegheny County, joined with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in celebrating the 47th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. And whereas the 1968 Fair Housing Act guarantees the right of all Americans to dwell in the neighborhood of our choice and is one of the most important components of our national civil rights policy. And whereas promoting equal housing opportunity is essential to our larger mission of promoting justice in all areas of life and for all citizens. Now, therefore, we, the county commissioners of Allegheny County, Maryland, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Fair Housing Month in Allegheny County and urge citizens to join in creating and promoting fair housing opportunities for all people. And witness whereof, we have here on two set our hands and cause the seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed this ninth day of April in the year 2015, signed by all three county commissioners, William Valentine, Creed Brody, and Jake Shane. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Mr. Faye, what were you doing in 1968 when this happened?
Oh.
Well, let's not go there. 2015.
Angela, would you go and join him tonight?
I'll join him.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. I wanted to take a few minutes tonight to highlight some of the successes we've had with our tree planting program over the last several years and talk about an event we have coming up at the fairgrounds here on Earth Day that will further highlight that and give another opportunity for our students to plant and help grow some of the trees at the fairgrounds that we've recently lost, which I'll explain here in a minute. Since 2013, the county's planted over 35 acres of trees, with additional 10 to 12 on schedule for this year, utilizing about a quarter of a million dollars in grant funding that we've received from the state through Governor O'Malley's Stream Restoration Challenge. I've been here several times to discuss that. That funding is winding down now as a result of that program. We've held several student planting days at various sites throughout the county involving about 400 students from all of our area high schools, as well as some from middle school. And they planted probably about three acres of trees on those various planting days. This year, we're pleased to be able to do a Earth Day tree planting event at the fairgrounds to help replace some of the trees that were recently cut down as a result of damage from an emerald ash borer infestation that we found out about last summer. We've been able to try to treat some of those trees to preserve some of the shade canopy that currently exists at the fairgrounds from those trees that have been growing for upwards of 80 years in hopes of being able to save some of them. Some had to be cut down because they were past the point of being saved, but this year through a gift from DNR, through the Gift of Trees program, we were able to put back two dozen trees to try to get a new shade canopy growing over time. And our local students are going to be able to help us out with that. We have 120 students coming on Earth Day and invite all of you to join us at that time as we learn more about why this has happened with the emerald ash borer, what's being done about it, and why trees are so important here in Allegheny County.
Good evening. My name's Angie Patterson. Dan pretty much covered what we need to talk about here, but I just wanted to say that I'm really proud of the projects that we've done to meet our watershed implementation plan goals. The state gives us regulations that we need to follow, and I think that we've done a good job of meeting those goals in ways that will improve our own community. So, in the last three years, we've planted double the amount of trees that we set out to plant, so it's been very successful and it's been a great team to work with. We have really good partnership with DNR, with Dan Hedrick and his crew, so that's just been, it's just been fun, and it's been fun to get the kids involved as well, so.
Why don't we have the crew stand up?
It's all right. We'd like to have both Dan Hedrick and Eric Vansley from the board come up and just offer a minute about what their involvement in the program's been and how we've all benefited.
Good evening. Dan Hedrick, State of Maryland Department of Natural Resources Forest Service. Our involvement has been really fruitful with the county here. It's what I've found was, when I spoke about it with the department, we have one of the relationships that doesn't exist in other counties, so it's something special. Our real role here is to look at the sites, determine what trees would be best for the site, whether, you know, soil conditions or whatnot, how wet or dry it is, and we do that on a regular basis. And then we get out there with the planting contractors and take a look at how they're doing and make sure everything's up to speed. Then at the end of the year, or I should say in the fall, then we do our survival checks and we report that to the county so they know how the trees are doing. And everything's looked really good the last couple of years.
Thank you much.
You're welcome.
Do you have any idea how many ash trees we've lost? I know, I remember about three years ago seeing the first little blue bag hanging in a tree, or purple bag hanging in a tree, wondering what it was.
What I can tell you, I can't give you a number per se. We do have a number for the fairgrounds, although I don't have that to memory right now, but countywide, we're going to unfortunately lose every ash tree that we have unless they aren't treated. And the treatments last for two years and they would have to be re-treated, so we're trying something at the fairgrounds with, hopefully with some success. So, most of the ash trees, we started seeing last fall with some decline, and by this year, it's been about a year. And whatever we have, we're going to lose that in our forest countywide, so.
And what are we replanning with?
Most of our forests are very resilient and we'll do fine. It's a shame to lose that diversity of species, but it will fill in naturally with other trees, you know, in our forested landscape. Now, in places like the fairgrounds, we work on trying to reestablish that shade trees that they say are so important.
And what type of tree, species of tree will we be seeing at the fairgrounds? Replacement trees?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember. We unloaded a whole lot of trees today. Swamp white oak was some of them, pin oak, and some red maple for this year.
Awesome.
We actually brought in about 320 trees, containerized trees this year for the county for different places with local governments and whatnot here. Frostburg State, City of Frostburg, City of Cumberland, and Rockegat State Park will house those 320 trees. And it's a diversity of species, too.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for inviting us. And my name is Eric Vansley. I'm the science supervisor for the county, so I've been working with Dan and Angie to get the students scheduled to come out and do the tree plantings. We actually have an additional tree planting going on with the Bureau of Mines at Frostburg State that will be on April 15th. And I'm happy to say we just received a Maryland SE grant in conjunction with Carroll County Public Schools, where we'll get some money to plant chestnut groves on a couple of those campuses of the high school and middle school here in Allegheny County to start replacing the chestnuts, which of course, we went through the chestnut blight as well, and they're almost 100% American again and resistant to the blight, so we're hoping that works out. So, I've also invited a couple of students here tonight to speak. Dylan Spano from Fort Hill High School is going to speak a couple of minutes about some of the other things that we're doing in the county to also help with the watershed implementation plan. And Carly Hackola will speak after him.
Hi, my name is Dylan Spano. I'm a junior at Fort Hill High School, and I've been asked to ask, I've been asked to explain why our school, how our school basically conserves energy. And one thing that our school does is we have automatic lighting and sinks to make sure that energy and water does not get wasted. We also have recycling boxes in every room, so we make sure that almost every single paper does not get thrown away and instead gets recycled once a week. One of our rooms in our school is completely powered by solar panels and nothing else. And one teacher is experimenting with this, I don't remember the name of it, I think he called it Aquarius, where he has fish and turtles in a pond, and their waste is used to supply nutrients to plants in case there were ever any reason why we couldn't use soil. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carly Hackola. I'm a senior at Mountain Ridge, and I'm also the student member of the Board of Education. There are a plethora of exciting and engaging environmental outreach programs taking place in our county all year round. From recycling to tree planting, environmental literacy is always in the forefront of our students' education. Around the county, kindergarteners, third graders, and seventh graders are receiving the opportunity for an outdoor learning experience. High school students from across the county have been given the opportunity to plant trees on three different occasions. As for Mountain Ridge, my high school, we participate in recycling every month. All paper and bottles are sorted by our environmental science class. In these classes, students receive hands-on learning experiences such as tree identification, water testing, and soil acidity testing. We are extra excited to be participating in the Bureau of Mines Tree Planting at FSU on April 15th. Moreover, our county association of student councils has created a new environmental chair position. It is the obligation of the selected chairperson to keep our delegation up to date on all environmental happenings in the area, as well as organizing recycling throughout our meetings and gatherings. Thank you for your continued support of programs that instill respect and good stewardship for our beautiful county and country.
Very nice, very nice. Anybody got any questions?
No questions, but I think it's been nice if you would. Frostburg State has an excellent program on chestnut trees, two years ago, gone on three years now. I got four chestnut trees in the program. Three of them are doing good. Unfortunately, Gobberly liked to root to the one tree, he ate the roots. But anyway, I think the thing is if people got some open territorial, grew up at Frostburg State, the more chestnut trees we get out there, the better off we are. And it don't take, the only thing is you've got to put protection around because of your level, they'll eat the tops right out of them in the second. I had to put about an eight foot, went around one on one.
We definitely appreciate what you all have done for this program. And Angie and Dan, it's a real honor to work with you people, and you brought a lot of attention with the way our whip is working compared to a lot of other counties, so you two have done a fantastic job. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have your thing for me? Yeah. We get in a picture.
You have to move in, and you have to turn to the side so everything can fit in.
Don't you turn to the side, you'll disappear.
Commissioner. And I'll send them to Angie and to Dan, and they will be distributed to all of you. Thank you.
Sir, thank you much.
Thank you.
Sir, always good to see you. Is that your daughter?
Yes.
Should have brought her up. Okay, gentlemen, we'll move into a few public hearings we have scheduled for this evening. Item four is a road closing petition, PBRI Myersdale LLC. The road closing petition is to close a certain portion of an unimproved 40-foot street described as Lincoln Street located in Laveil, election district 29. Mr. Rudd?
Okay, this is, as you've indicated, a road closing petition. The commissioners actually, you took action on March 5th to open for the purpose of closing this particular street. This is a paper street in Laveil behind where CBS is, next to Camp Ground Road. It's being closed to facilitate a potential commercial development in that location. And today's, tonight's a hearing. It's been appropriately advertised in the Times News, and if anybody wants to speak about it, for or against it, certainly they can do so. And based upon the results, you certainly can take action. The staff's already reviewed it, as I've said. You already voted to open for the purpose of closing.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this petition? You say we can't take action?
I say you can't.
Sir, I'd like to make a motion then. We close up?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Get things done a little bit more rapidly around here. Next item is Code Home Rule Bill 315, dealing with the nursing home, an act to amend Chapter 140 of the Code of Public Laws of Allegheny County. Mr. Rudd?
Oh, yes. This is a public hearing this evening on this particular code bill. As I explained, I think at the last meeting, this is a little bit confusing. There's something called the Nursing Home Board of Allegheny County, which has nothing to do with the former nursing home that we owned, but rather actually deals with current Lions Manor. I know Troy Rains is here if he wishes to speak about it. What this was a number of years ago when that nursing home was created, there was an act of the legislature authorizing the commissioners to appoint the first board. Then the commissioner stepped back. What's happening now is the Lions Manor wishes to eliminate the Nursing Home Board of Allegheny County and transfer those assets to a new nonprofit corporation, which would then be able to act as any other nonprofit corporation with Lions Manor Nursing Home. So, today is a public hearing. If the commissioners are amenable, certainly you can take action to pass this bill, and then it'll be up to the Lions Manor to move forward.
Mr. Rains, did you all like to make any comments?
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Paul.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Motion proceed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Okay, and our last item under public hearings is Code Home Rule Bill 4-15, an act authorizing the sale of two parcels of real property located in the Riverside Industrial Park. Mr. Rudd?
Once again, this is a hearing. The bill was introduced a couple of weeks ago. This is authorizing sale of two parcels back here in the industrial park for a potential economic development project. It is a hearing today. If anyone wants to speak about that, they can. Pro or con?
Do we have any public comment on that? Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'd say let's make a motion while we're on the roll, sir.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
So far.
Very good.
We got all this pretty lucky letting Mr. Rudd speak this much.
One more thing, you better.
He is an attorney.
Okay, we'll move into our action agenda. Division of Planning Services, we've got Mr. Dorsey here.
Good afternoon. Back in November of last year, the Board of Commissioners instructed the Division of Planning Services to invite proposals for professional consulting services to update the zoning code in the county. I'm here tonight to say that that has been accomplished, and I'd like to seek your approval to select AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Newark, Delaware, to provide those consulting services and to authorize the president to sign a professional services agreement between the county and the firm.
You have any questions, guys?
None.
Do we have a motion? Move forward?
So, move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
Mr. DeWitt can come back to the front. Maryland Department of Environment Watershed Assistance Grant Program.
Gentlemen, here to try to get some permission to move forward with a project that's sorely needed, one that's been ongoing for a long time, which will hopefully be able to be taken care of here in a few years, pending success of this effort. An area just south of Shaft in Georges Creek, next to the Braddock Construction Laydown Area, where Georges Creek over time has been silted over time and time again and now closed directly into an abandoned surface mine pit that has since turned into a very large lake. It's an area where the county sewer line runs immediately in between Georges Creek and the abandoned surface mine pit and regularly is flooded. And then, as you know, we receive overflow infiltration into our sewer system and causes a lot of problems for us. So, it's not immediately obvious to the county, our staff, as to what should be done in that area. We received an opportunity from Department of Environment to receive some design funds through a program called the Watershed Assistance Grant Program, where we can secure consulting firms to come up with some alternatives to see what would be the best solution for the area. We normally do not go after design funds because most of the work we can do in-house. This is a case where it'd be an exorbitant amount of time and perhaps effort to come up with a solution, so this will help us zero in on what would be most appropriate to solve that problem. As I said, there's a lot going on in the area. We have the surface mine pit, the sewer line. These funds are only available for design, so it's not a case where we're turning down possible construction funds to pursue the design. The goal here would be to obtain an alternative analysis, find out what would be most appropriate, put forth a solution in the area, and then receive very close to a set of bidable and permissible design plans and specifications to then look at grant programs such as the one we're using to build the stormwater pond in Frostburg, which is a minimum half million dollar application. It's all grant funded, and assuming we get the design where we want to, look at applying for that program in the next couple of years to try to receive some construction funds. So, tonight, we're seeking permission to sign an MOU with the Department of Environment to accept the grant funds, the amount of $59,180, to proceed with sending out an RFP to receive the design services. And then, assuming that moves forward here, I'd be returning in a few weeks to seek permission to award that proposal to the successful firm and then begin the design with the goal of having this all completed by the end of the calendar year.
I have a couple of questions for Dan on this. They plan on draining it? You know, because I've been stalking fish here since I've been a kid, so I know it's clear for it because I go fishing there all the time.
Right. One of the problems we've learned, we've been working very closely with Bureau of Mines, is that one of the issues they're seeing is that drainage from that pit is reaching into the Hoppin Townes and going out in Cherryville and in the Hoppin Drainage Tunnel. So, they're currently going through a project that's just beginning now through September where they're going to be doing some stream monitoring to find out what they can do to seal the stream in Georges Creek, as well as areas, I guess, like the surface mine pit, to see how they can eliminate that drainage that's leaving Georges Creek watershed and going in the Braddock River watershed. So, we're working closely with them. They've indicated to us that they don't have a problem filling the pit. I don't think anyone in our office has enough environmental experience with stream restoration to say that that's a viable alternative without receiving that advice from a consultant as a result of this study. So, it is on the table, but the problem we're running into here is that we feel like just cleaning out the stream and kind of restoring to what it was very quickly over time, it would just spill right back in. So, the combination of that problem with the stream being in such a cramped quarters right now, coupled next to our sewer line being so close, which is located in what's supposed to be the flood plain in that area, next to that large pit where the stream is currently flowing directly into, it makes for a situation that's not immediately obvious to us on how to proceed. So, the alternatives aren't very clear to us, and we're trying to get some guidance to make a recommendation, but we do know that that area is used for a lot of recreational purposes. I didn't know it was a surface mine pit, I just thought it was a lake. So, as we kind of learn more information here, we're trying to come up with the best alternative. It's just not really clear what that is yet.
You're going to have to have a fishing radio to get all this stuff out there.
Oh, there's a bunch in it. You know, and it's been, I know of at least since probably the mid-'50s. Anyhow, it was there long before the sewer line come down through there. I run that piece, so, okay.
So, do we have a motion to accept this offer of money?
A motion to accept.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Creed hates to lose his fiction off. Okay, we have one more. It's Resolution 15-6. Okay, we have one more. It's Resolution fifteen dash six. Ms. Woodfield, Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, twenty fourteen dash twenty nineteen, TIP amendment? That's a mouthful.
I know. The tip is the Transportation Improvement Program. It lists all the short-term transportation projects scheduled in the Cumberland Metropolitan Planning Area, and it's amended as needed. The city of Cumberland is requesting funds for Mechanic Street Road Access Project, they're AARC funds, and if they're federal funds in the project, it must be included in the tip, so they get their funds. We're including it in the tip today. So, I'm asking the commissioners, acting as the Cumberland Area MPO, to sign the resolution and amend the tip.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before I forget it, since we're talking about Cumberland, I'd like to recognize our partners from City of Cumberland Economic Development People. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And now for our consent agenda. Dave?
Commissioners, we only have two items on your consent agenda this evening. Item number ten is the Disaster Recovery Assistance Project. It's a housing buyout for three properties in Potomac Park, and those properties are located at one-one-eight-ten through one-one-eight-one-four Mulberry Avenue. Item eleven deals with our expired operation and maintenance agreement with the folks at Hot Stove for the fields, the baseball fields that we have there.
Gentlemen, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dave. Do you have any further comments?
Commissioners, we just had a bid opening this week for the Bowling Green Waterline Replacement Contract, W thirty-three, and at some point in time in the very near future, we hope to be processing those bids and advancing them for your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Rudd?
Yes.
It's your night.
I could have Mr. Ned Med read this, but I'll be happy to. This is a statement regarding the closed session of the commissioners. It was held on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at four o'clock PM. The board of county commissioners at a meeting convened on March twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, at four o'clock PM, voted unanimously to go into a closed session. The meeting time and place and the purpose of the meeting was provided in a public notice distributed on Tuesday, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. The notice was provided in the same manner and also to the same entities as received the commissioners' regular business meeting notices. The meeting was closed in accordance with State Government Article Section ten dash five oh eight of the annotated Code of Maryland, and the purpose which the meeting was closed was to discuss pending litigation with legal counsel and to obtain legal advice from counsel concerning that litigation in accordance with State Government Article Section ten dash five oh eight A seven. Those in attendance for the closed session were Commissioner Waymar Valentine, Commissioner Creed V. Brody Jr., Commissioner Jacob C. Shade, County Administrator David Eberle, County Attorney William M. Rudd, and Attorney Charles D. McLeod of the Law Firm of Funk and Bolton. Legal advice was provided by Attorney Charles D. McLeod of the Firm of Funk and Bolton, counsel to the Clean Chesapeake Coalition, which Allegheny County is a member. Mr. McLeod provided an update on litigation involving Exelon Corporation related to the Conawingo Dam on the Sesquiana River and the potential merger of Exelon with Pepco Power Company. Legal advice was also provided by William M. Rudd concerning that litigation. No form or action was taken by the county commissioners in response to the legal advice provided. Upon motion made by Commissioner Shade, seconded by Commissioner Brody, the meeting was adjourned at four forty-five PM.
Thank you. Do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
No, none tonight.
You left Rudd to it.
We'll get out of here. Yeah, that's fine.
Sir, just briefly, I see the other day that the Senate did pass their moratorium on drilling, which really disturbs me because they were so concerned about an eighteen-mile-long stretch of Allegheny County that's nine miles wide. And I am going to speak on behalf of them people, since we have been commercially, been an energy source for this country since the eighteen thirties. It really disappoints me that this is the biggest concern of a senator downstate. Now, you don't see us trying to put bills in up at this end of the state that would close the Chesapeake Bay or put it under a moratorium for three years to study it. It just really upsets me that that's, there's a certain few that's not speaking for this end of the state. And not only that, the governor run in favor of this, and won, by the way. So, to me, this is a personal slap at the governor. With that being said, I ain't going to get into that anymore, because I am so happy to see Al Feldstein here tonight, because I do have to share a little story. If it wasn't for Al, which I met at Canal Park Festival, when it used to be held down where the canal boat was on fifty-one years and years ago, he was down there selling his books, and I have bought every book that Al ever produced on local history, because I think that what he has done for this area for local history is invaluable. And I proudly keep every book that I have from Al on display at my house, because it's a great way to talk with people. Soon someone has a question on the history of Allegheny County, I run to one of Al's books. Sir, you know.
You honor me.
Thank you for everything you have done.
That would be making history.
Yes, sir.
I'll make my statements real brief. Hate to upset Creed anymore, but only the Senate said it's going to be a two-year study. The House says it's going to be a seven-year study, so they've got to come together on that yet. And once again, I'd like to say thanks to Al. I've known Al for more years, and neither one of us want to admit, we've worked together.
Everybody in this room has been in this together, so.
Okay, Al, you're a total bomb, and you haven't done that. Well, we truly appreciate you being here.
Yes.
And with that, our next public work session will be Thursday, April twenty-third, at three PM in Room two twelve. Next public business meeting, Thursday, April twenty-third, at five PM in this room. Keep an eye for news releases on our budget schedule, and with that, we want to thank everybody for coming. The meeting's now closed.